All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry, we're a bit late. The board was first in executive. Let me make a motion to open tonight's meeting. And what time are we now?
It's 7:56.
7:56. Can I have a motion to open the public meeting? Reopen?
I move.
All in favor? Hi, everyone. The board was previously in executive session discussing litigation, contract negotiations, employment history of particular persons, matters of health and safety, and to receive advice from council subject to board approval. We also were previously in session with, in a work session, we were invited by the town board to be included in a work session which took place this evening. That's why we're a bit late, so our apologies. And hold on. Excuse me? Ah, yes, I'm sorry. Can we all roster the pledge of allegiance? My apologies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So as I was saying, I'm so sorry. We also are coming back from a joint work session with the town board, which is, took place in the town hall assembly room. We were invited by the town board to join their work session wherein we work in a presentation on the Chapline proposal and something that's something we will be discussing and probably bringing back during a board meeting to discuss with the community further. So just wanted to give you an update on why we're a bit delayed, but we are working with the town on some community-related matters. So, thank you. Anyway, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Tonight is our annual tax warrant meeting, and that is where we approve the tax levy that all of you approved when voting for our annual budget in May. So again, thank you for passing our budget, and this allows us to collect the funds that we use to operate all of our schools and the Chapqua Library. Now, although it is summer and everyone's taking much-needed vacation time, there's still a lot of work going on and a lot to get done to get ready for the new school year. That includes hiring new teachers and administrators, and as we recently informed the community, we are very excited that we have hired a new principal at Greeley to replace our beloved Andrew Corsiglia. Dr. Sandra Seppi, or Sandy as she likes to be called, will be moving over from a very successful seven-year term at Putnam Valley, joining us on August 30th in time for the start of the new school year. Dr. Seppi was selected after a rigorous search process, which involved interviews with several groups of district stakeholders, and we are all thrilled that she accepted the position and she will be joining us. So that Dr. Seppi could give the appropriate notice to her current district, Andrew Corsiglia will be doing double duty until then as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Leadership Development, and also as the principal of Greeley until August 30th, when Dr. Seppi will officially take over that role. So thank you, Andrew. As for other work to get ready, being done to get ready for our schools to reopen in September, I know that Dr. Ackerman will be giving an update on a number of items during the superintendent's report. I also wanted to mention that the Board of Ed will be having its own work session, although I just mentioned the town session. We will be having our own work session this week, which will focus on district facilities. There'll be some talk of that tonight, but that will be this Thursday, the 11th, at 5:00 p.m. And although all of us want to get away from our computers this summer, this is just a reminder to check your emails for information on action items that we don't want you to miss out on, like athletic sign-ups, and also particularly the application to join one of our board committees and/or advisory committees. A message detailing the committee memberships and the application process was sent out last Friday, and the deadline to apply is August 19th. These committee memberships are really a great way to stay active and engage in the district. We really do appreciate the input from community members, and so we look forward to reviewing the applications, and we plan to notify and appoint the new members in September. So I know we have a lot of items to get to in the superintendent's report tonight, and so I'm going to hand everything off to Dr. Ackerman. Thank you, Jane. And if you could just pull up my presentation, Dr. Schoenbart, because we're going to begin with the Code of Conduct hearing. So every year, the district is required to have a hearing on the Code of Conduct, and post the proposed Code of Conduct for the new school year's 30 days in advance on its website. So our Code of Conduct has been posted since the end of July, but I do want to go over some key adjustments that we're recommending based on feedback from our principals, our attorney, Inside Educational Group, and our policy committee. Right now, the code is in draft form, and a final recommendation we've made for adoption to the Board of Education at the August 31st meeting. So this is an opportunity for members of the community to provide feedback to us at this meeting, as well as to email us throughout the month of August, any feedback you have on our proposed suggested changes, or any changes that you don't see in the Code of Conduct that you'd like the policy committee to consider before crafting the final version for the Board of Education. So one of the things that we had had done based on feedback from Insight is we added some language around roles of everyone within the community for whom the Code of Conduct impacts, and just the responsibility for us all to understand what our role is within the application of the Code of Conduct and what that looks like on a daily basis, and then for the principal and superintendent to provide space for stakeholders to understand their role within the Code of Conduct and what it looks like in action in schools. And so, for example, that would be an opportunity for parents to provide the board feedback during this process. Within the context of the hearing, it would be the requirement of principals to discuss the Code of Conduct at the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year in appropriate to the, in the appropriate manner for the students in which it serves, which is different elementary through high school. We also added some clarification around definitions based on new statute language. So those are highlighted in yellow, and they focus on hair texture, protective hairstyles, gender expression, and transgender status. And we also added a definition that linked to threats of mass harm. So all of this is outlined in the Code of Conduct, and any changes you'll see within the code itself is highlighted yellow on the main page of our website, and then attached to our Code of Conduct. But before I get there, I need to, I need to share one more adjustment that we spent a lot of time talking about in the policy committee was around a restorative justice, and we're expanding that opportunity for students to participate in that process at superintendent level. Initially, that was only an opportunity for students who were suspended at the principal level for secondary, for our secondary children, but now we've expanded that to the superintendent level, where students may be able to participate in a restorative justice process at the discretion of the superintendent, given the circumstances that are surrounding the incident for which they've been brought forward for a hearing. All right, so then, just in terms of our range of consequences, which is an addendum to the code, so students understand, and parents, if students take a misstep and they engage in misbehavior, there's a certain range of consequences that the principal can pull from based on their actions. We added, we've, we had a few incidents where some students were budding entrepreneurs, and they decided that they were going to try to sell some products in our school. So we wrote some language to be really clear that that is not something that is permissible under state regulation, but maybe we didn't, weren't as clear as we needed to be in our policy, so we wrote some language around that for our kids. We had to add an additional box around threats of mass harm to schools based on a recommendation from our attorney. And then probably one of the more significant adjustments is that in terms of our secondary-level responses to incidents of discrimination, hate, and bias, we define middle school as grades seven and eight, and that was based on feedback from Insight, as well as feedback from our middle school principals, and our interactions with our fifth and sixth graders around some of their behaviors that may fall into this category. So while our students in fifth and sixth grade may be held accountable with the same seriousness at which we're approaching our upper-level middle school and high school students, this gives us the discretion to not necessarily respond with a, with a baseline intervention, as we are for our seventh and 12th grade students when they engage in behaviors like this. So at this point, I just want to ask Ryan or Hillary if they wanted to add anything based on our discussion with the administrative team or the attorney when we crafted some of these changes. And I've already shared some of the suggestions from Insight that they made in their report that are reflected in this policy, and we did go over the changes with them as well.
Sure. I mean, some of the language changes, as you stated, were just New York State sort of dictating, and, but I feel like this in particular warrants commenting in that, you know, our middle schools go 5-8, but from a teacher certification perspective, from, from many perspectives that we, you know, sought in looking at the discipline code, 5-6 and 7-8 are not the same. And I think that having our discipline code reflect sort of developmental appropriateness versus just how we happen to organize our buildings makes a lot of sense in terms of the discipline. And even as we within our middle schools have moved to treating the fifth graders differently in terms of teams and how we're approaching just teaching and learning on that level, I think it makes a lot of sense to start this sort of upper-grade discipline code, if you will, in seventh versus fifth.
And from my point of view, in addition to that, I was pleased to see the addition of more options for the district team to use, particularly if the restorative justice framework has been working, to give Dr. Ackerman the option to be able to use that for the rare instances that it comes into play for her. Seems like a good next step, given that we've had good success with that at the principal level. So yeah, just pleased to see more options and ability to kind of differentiate these issues, whether it's by grade level or seriousness.
It came out through our discussion around this, that at times, we don't, our thought process was we don't want the potential range of consequences dictating how this is handled in terms of it's a principal-level suspension or superintendent-level suspension, so that by giving Dr. Ackerman the same options to employ restorative justice as an option, it leaves our building leaders sort of freer to treat the, the offense with the right level of reaction, if that makes sense.
Those are all the proposed changes. So at this point, does the board have any comments based on what I've shared that you want the policy committee to consider as we move forward and present the final version of this code for your, for the meeting, for your possible adoption? No? No? Okay, so then, at this point, since this is a hearing, if there's anyone in the community that would like to make a comment on the proposed adjustments to the Code of Conduct, or any other suggestions they have regarding the Code of Conduct, let me do that at this time. You have three minutes to share your thinking with the Board of Okay, thank you. So if there's any other feedback that members of our community would like to share with the school board or with me regarding the Code of Conduct before adoption, please send that to us by email, and we will certainly review it and consider it as we prepare the final document for the board's consideration on August 31st. So now we're going to move into the superintendent's update. So I want to begin by welcoming again, and thank you, Jane, for your comments on Dr. Seppi, who is here with us this evening. And we appointed Dr. Seppi last week so we could be sure that she started with us at the beginning of the school year. So now I'd like to welcome Dr. Seppi to the microphone. She's prepared a few comments to the board, and we're so excited to have you be a part of our community here, Sandy. So, thank you.
It's just a joy to be here tonight. I'm honored to be the next principal of Horace Greeley. I want to thank the board for their very thorough process that I went through, which really helped me learn a lot about your school community. In particular, I want to thank Dr. Ackerman and the district team, Mrs. Edelman, Dr. Pease, Mr. Corsiglia, for all they did to organize those committees, and everybody who came in during the summer on their vacation time to interview me. Like I said, I can't wait to get up and running August 30th, but I will be here tomorrow for a meet and greet, as well as next week for a meet and greet, so staff can come in and say hello and get to know me a little bit, tell me about their vacation before we get started. I'll be here for Equity Day and also for coordinator training. So I'm looking forward to the transition and getting to know everyone, so we're ready for the students on day one. So thank you again. I appreciate this wonderful opportunity.
Thank you, Sandy. Welcome, welcome to the team. We started right away. She's going to be here tomorrow. So it's great. Okay. So now we're going to move into, I'm having a little sensitivity problem here. Okay, great. Andrew, budget, tax levy, and tax rates.
Yes, as Dr. Ackerman said earlier, we are very thankful for the community's support of our proposed budget back in May, so that adopted budget is now kind of in the works. We're using those funds now to support our schools. That budget was for 133.96 million, or 2.69%, and the property tax levy that we proposed to support that budget was 117.1 million, or a 2.79% increase. That was a tax cap compliant tax levy. Nothing has changed about those numbers at the top of the screen. What we have done now is we've met with the town controllers of both the town of Mount Pleasant and the town of Newcastle, and the estimated tax rates at the moment for Newcastle are 1.8% increase, and in Mount Pleasant, 8.24. And I put in the brackets to the side there what we proposed at the budget time. Those tax rates are subject to the assessed values and the changes in assessed values that happen at the town level, which is why those numbers change. They are not controlled by the board, but I thought it's important for us to share that. So Resolution 5.3 this evening is for the board to formally enact that tax warrant, authorizing the towns to collect the taxes on our behalf.
Any questions regarding that? Okay, I'd like to provide as, again, I skipped a slide. Here we go. Zodder Property Update. So we've been receiving questions regarding the sale of that property, and so what Andrew has done is he has created a bank of questions and answers that we will be placing on our website along with the advertisement for sale, because we feel it's very important that all interested parties have the same information when they're making a decision on whether or not they're going to place an offer on the, on the property. So I just wanted to share that with our community, and I also wanted to update our families on where we are with the DEP. We have submitted our response letter to their most recent list of areas they wanted additional information on, or some adjustments made to the plan. So that is in, has been sent to the Department of Environmental Protection, so I'll update us, I'll update the board on where we are in that process at our, at our next meeting, but it's now currently under review at the DEP. Okay, so for our safety and security audit, we had done an RFP. We did not receive any responses despite our outreach, but what we did receive was an inquiry from BOSIS, who has been working with Altaris, who has done, who has engaged in our, in our security audit previously. And so based on where we are with our lack of responses to our RFP, I'm going to recommend we move forward and we contract with BOSIS to work with Altaris to perform another safety and security audit. I also think it would behoove us to engage in, with a partner to survey the community, which we did the last time that we had this audit. So if it's okay with the Board of Education, I'd like to start moving in that direction and secure a surveyor. I will reach out to the person who we engaged the last time, since they have an understanding of our community already, and then have Andrew reach out to Altaris to begin the audit. Does that, does that sound like a strong plan for everyone, considering where we are?
Right, and that's a similar process we engaged in several years ago, which, which was very helpful and beneficial in terms of the security audit and also the survey of the community. Okay, so.
Hey, so I'd like to welcome Justin Olive to the table up here. He's our Director of Science for the District. He's also a professional developer. Adam is away on his vacation. I hope he's enjoying himself with his family and not watching this meeting right now. However, I'm pleased to have Justin sit in his place tonight, and Justin will present, be presenting on the fifth-grade science curriculum that we will be proposing that we move forward with next school year. But as a part of that curriculum adopt, adoption tonight, we have materials that are sole source, so I just want him to explain that to the board, because it's a resolution on the agenda connected to the presentation that he'll be sharing in the next few minutes. So go ahead, Justin.
There you go. So Carolina Biological is the sole-source vendor for the Smithsonian Science for the Classroom, which is the program curriculum and kits and materials that we're going to use for our fifth-grade science curriculum. However, Carolina Biological is the online platform, it's Carolina Science Online, that is the only exclusive publisher of the Smithsonian Science for the Classroom curriculum units, and the only company to collaborate with Smithsonian developing these units. And Carolina Biological, the source for the materials and the kits, is the only supply company that is licensed to sell the programs, teacher guides, student guides, student investigation books, and materials that coincide with the Smithsonian curriculum.
Thank you, Justin. And then we also have another sole-source item on the agenda that's connected to our Benchmark Phonics program that we'll be sharing with you for our students in grades three through five. So I just want to mention to you that this is on the agenda, and it'll be tied to a presentation that Carrot Bartlett is going to be zooming in to do in a few minutes. Our grand opening of the Sustainability Research Center will be after our August 31st meeting at 11:15 a.m. So we've sent out invitations, but if you didn't get an invitation and you'd like to join us, just let me know, and we welcome you to be an attendance. We're really excited to open that center. It looks fantastic. And I just would like to take the opportunity to thank Joe Gromando and Josh and Justin for really being a part of helping us move that forward from vision to creation. And of course, Eric Kyers here is our architect, who designed the space for us, and it's something that hasn't really existed in high schools anywhere. So I'm really excited to be able to share this with our Board of Education and with our community, and most importantly, with our students come September. So I wanted to share that with you. And I want to provide a COVID update. Here we go, COVID update number one. So in the agenda tonight is a resolution for the board for your consideration that allows the district, under direction from either Department of Health or our medical director, to test students who are participating in extracurricular activities. We're not going to start the school year doing that, but I would like the opportunity to be able to leverage that process if necessary, if we see a cluster of cases in, on a sports team, or in the theater, or in some other area where it would make sense to screen kids before they went back and engaged in practice, or in, in some kind of activity where there might be an increased ability for there to be a spread of the virus. But we're certainly not starting in that way unless we get guidance from the Health Department or the Department of Education that suggests that we do that. But one thing I do want to make sure that we do, and I'm asking for your consideration to approve, that if, I would like to begin to allow students to go on overnight field trips again, but prior to them departing, departing for those trips, I'd like them to have a negative COVID home test result reported to the district 24 hours in advance of leaving. I think that's a reasonable request. Trips are not required for any part of the curriculum. Students can opt out of those events, and I would like us to engage in that process, just to be, to be as preventive as possible to, to hopefully limit the, the likelihood of there being an issue while students are away on a trip with our staff and potentially have, have, have the virus. So I just, I feel like there's, there needs to be an extra layer here, if we're going to allow kids to go out on field trips again. So I'd like the board to consider that, and I know that we have some field trips that are coming up for the end of August, which is why I'd like to make that decision today without any kind of guidance from the Health Department or the Department of Education sharing with us that recommendation. There are some major decisions that are still pending, and I know that that might be uncomfortable for people, but I've gotten unofficial emails that guidance may or may not be coming from somewhere. So I would like to wait to make decisions on whether or not we're going to allow students and staff who are COVID-positive to Zoom in to teach or to learn. And I just want to wait a little bit longer on our open house structure, whether it's going to be Zoom, a hybrid version where people can come in or not, or totally in-person. I just want to see what that guidance looks like. We are planning assemblies, but all, all building-level assemblies will need to be outside at the beginning of the school year. We can easily make that decision today, so we're planning around that. So we don't plan on having full buildings in the cafeteria at the elementary school, or in, or the, or in the auditorium, or the gym at the high school at the start of the school year. We just don't think that that's wise, and we don't need to do that. But we're trying to, trying to make as few decisions right now as possible before the guidance is released, to see what that says, rather than making decisions now and then having to alter what we've done. I think that'll cause confusion for families. So things that are like pressing would be this overnight field trip resolution, and the resolution that would allow us to have the ability to require testing since sports are starting soon. And that's where, if we're going to have exposure, that would be the area where the, where high spread would take place, because that's what we've seen in the past. Everything else I'd like to wait to see if something comes out between now and the 31st. So, go ahead, Kelly.
And we, the district has more of those rapid tests, right, in hand?
We have thousands. And so if anyone wants a test, they can come and get it, and we're getting more. So.
Is it, sorry, is it your understanding that still, regardless of whether students can Zoom in if they're positive or not, that like, they're still supposed to wear masks when they come back? Like, has, has any of that guidance changed?
Nothing's happened. We've received no guidance. I'm not sure if they're going to give us new information on how long students have to stay out when they're positive, or if they have to wear masks when they come back. We, superintends have requested it. We haven't received it yet. So I'm just gonna, with our summer school, we followed the same procedures we did during the school year. So I'm hoping for some clarity before we open. If not, then I'll have to work with our medical director to make some decisions. Okay. I'll send an update tomorrow to the community after our meeting about just what we spoke about tonight, because I think it's important that I start pushing on information again. All right, so now we're going to move into Carol presenting our recommended new phonics, word study, and grammar curriculum for grades three through five. So Carol, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Carol's on vacation, but she's doing, which we appreciate. Carol, thank you very much.
Yeah, slide from the Outer Banks, internet unstable. Hi, everybody.
Okay, so Carol, I'm going to move the slides for you, and you can, if you need me to move quicker, just let me know. So.
Sure. You can, you can go to the first slide. So, hi, everybody. I hope everybody's having a great summer. So earlier in this summer, we engaged in a process to select phonics, word study, grammar program for upper grades, grades three to five. And this comes with a little background in this, in the shift in balancing, rebalancing balanced literacy, and some of you may have heard what's been going on. But we were kind of ahead of the game. Jamie, back in 2019, convened the committee to select phonics first for K2. So we have direct instruction in phonics in our primary grades, strong phonemic awareness program, and this year we're also adding decodable texts. But the implications for the upper grades is some research around a need for more direct instruction in word study, understanding Greek and Latin roots, more spelling, phony manipulation. And so in an attempt to, to get our kids there, we researched several programs. You can go to the next slide.
And then, just to the board understands, this is, we had representatives from all of our grade levels, and our people personnel services staff, and of course, we had our administration, and then we had our staff developer who will help support these programs in their implementation process.
And that, that was the committee, that slide was the names of the people that joined us on June 27th and 28th. The first part of the process, we did some group research to develop a common understanding around phonics and the implications for word study and grammar in the upper grades. We reviewed some data, looking at our exiting second, third, and fourth grade spelling inventories. We studied the principles of research on effective phonics, which is a piece by Fontes and Pennell, identified a selection criteria that would vendors, reviewed the materials. I spoke to some other districts, and then we reviewed and selected a program. So this was the criteria that the committee decided upon for what we thought would be the most important aspects of a phonics, word study, grammar program, that it was systematic. There was a multi-sensory piece. There was a strong connection and a transfer in real reading and writing, a way to assess the transference, and then also it'd be time-sensitive, because we have jam-packed schedules, and something that could be under a half hour a day would be really helpful. The teacher prep was a consideration, and opportunities to differentiate, clear organization of materials, a digital component, and a vocabulary and grammar component, and then opportunities to actually hand-write. These were the programs that we looked at. We had the materials all with us and spent an entire day. Each, each presentation was about 45 minutes long from each of these vendors, and the one that really stood out was Benchmark Phonics Workshop, because it did. And the one that really stood out was Benchmark Phonics Workshop, because it did meet the criteria that the committee advised. And, and these were the areas that stood out most. It's an explicit systematic program. It's got authentic application in reading. There is a word sort, the multi-sensory piece, that's a little bit more direct than like a words their way word sort. There's an opportunity to build automaticity. There are assessments. Dr. Jan Hausbrook, who's an authority on research in reading and development and assessment, there are three assessments during the year that she developed that are quick and easy. And then there is a grammar and vocabulary instruction part to it. So it kind of met all of the pieces that we thought were important. The components of the program are teacher resource manual and resource book. And the students have a word study book. It's a soft-covered booklet that has passages and wordless reading for automaticity, and a really nice digital piece. There's, whatever that they, they have in the word study book is available digitally, but there's also games, there's a homeschool connection with activities, and there's an e-planner for teachers to manage and monitor their students' progress. They can create their class list and monitor the assessments digitally. So that was helpful. Again, it's explicit systematic word study. They always have a whole group component and a small group opportunity for instruction. And in grades three, four, and five, it builds on the year before. So grade three is a focus on multi-syllabic words and syllable types. And then grade four moves into more syllable types and morphology. And then in grade five, it's advanced morphology with a study of Greek and Latin roots. We were really impressed, we, we worked with one of the presenters. Adam was on a meeting with her, and they gave an example of one of the lessons was on these, these Greek and Latin roots, Geo, RK, and Rupt, and the activities that kids engage in, in learning the words and being able to transfer that learning in, in their reading and writing. And we just thought it was really important to see that, because that was the piece that's going to help with the vocabulary development. These were just samples. It's systematic, and it, in grades three, four, and five, here are examples of the units and what would be included in some units, for example. And then the word, in the word study booklet, each unit has a passage, a nonfiction passage that's either science or social studies related. And the words in the passage, decodable text, have been learned either in a previous lesson or in that current lesson, and then practiced in real, authentic reading. The word sorts, I said before, are direct and short and make sense. The word sort for a vocabulary lesson, for example, with those Greek and Latin roots, was to then group the words, which, which group of words here are people, like archaeologist and archivist, which were places that had to do with geo, and then which were events? And they identified words with the affix rupt in it, like an eruption. So it's really, really interesting stuff. Back one more. Okay, this is one of the parts that we really liked. It's the automaticity building, and where kids get to practice reading word lists based on what the study is. And they read the word list to the teacher first, practice reading on their own, and when they're ready, can read with a partner and timed. And the bottom of the page has the place to progress monitor. So it was really kind of a nice way to track kids' progress. You can go to the next slide, sorry. The grammar piece is called the Grammar Micro Workshop. And this is like about a 10-minute daily mini lesson on some element of grammar, whatever it may be. This example here is different sentence types, simple, complex, and compound sentences. And there's an exploration piece where they look for the sentence types in a mentor text. And then there's a piece of direct teaching of the sentence types, for example, in this lesson, and then application in their own writing. So it can be used in conjunction with our current writer's workshop.
Okay, and then our last slide are the program costs associated with the, with the Benchmark.
Yes, and this is for a six, a six-year contract.
So are there any questions for Carol about the selection process, or some of the components of the program that she shared with you tonight that you'd like her to answer for you?
Not a question per se, but wanted to say that I'm thrilled that we're doing this.
Oh, my God.
Because I think that especially with the focus on handwriting and spelling, especially for the kids coming out of COVID and focusing on grades three through five, these are kids who spent a lot of their early education in the COVID mode and spending it on a lot of screen time. And let me tell you, the first thing they figured out is that the screens spell check for them.
Yeah.
They can do voice to text.
Yeah.
So I think that this is a skill set that unfortunately was one of the things that really was lost in COVID for a lot of these kids. So I'm really, really thrilled that we're rolling this out, and it looks great.
And it's going to be interesting to see what happens in third grade this year, because I think, Jamie, they're the first group that will have had three years of phonics first also, right? Pretty sure.
I, I just am thrilled with this, and I know that, you know, I'm, I'm a little old school, and I'm older than most of the people up here, but we used to have a lot of grammar when, when I went through elementary school and middle school. And anecdotally, I would hear from parents, you know, that really wanted more grammar, and it goes hand in hand with our writing programs, et cetera. And this program really does cover a lot of bases. I mean, it hits the automaticity, it hits the phonics, it goes back to grammar, and I think it really will develop a huge range of skill sets for all of our kids. And I personally am really, really pleased with this. It seems like we did a lot of homework and that this really is far-reaching, and it's really going to benefit a lot of our kids. So I'm really, really happy to see this program.
Thanks, I think it will too. I talked to a principal in Iroquois School District, it's upstate New York, and it just made sense to speak to them, because they use the units of study, but they adopted the Benchmark Phonics Workshop back in 2019, when we started phonics first. And they use a universal screening like we do. Theirs is Ames Web though, and it tests for students' understanding, how to decode like nonsense words and letter sound naming. And in their K4 as grade levels, 90% of their kids on those, on those tests, those assessments were at or above grade level in those areas. So they really felt like this phonics word study was very explicit and helpful, especially in third and fourth grade.
I think it's great.
Great.
Yeah, Carol, this is Ryan. I just.
Hi, Ryan.
That last point you just made, I just want to encourage the district to work on that explanation to help parents understand how this new addition will complement what we've been doing.
Right.
See how they play off each other. It's terrific that, I was going to ask you if you had an example of the district that has the combo. If you have even more of those, I'm sure parents would benefit from, from seeing that, just to see how it's gonna augment what we're doing. And again, hopefully raise achievement for the students for whom, you know, the study was not sufficient.
Right. Definitely, thanks.
I also, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
Okay, so I have some questions. When you talked about Greek roots and having, being able to transfer opportunities with handwriting, and, and then also to reading by, you know, giving more strategies to decode words while you're reading, is there anything like that for writing, where you can transfer, and it's, it's explicit? Because I think we do a lot of work around reading, and we have, you know, reading levels, and children are reading at high levels, but somehow, a lot of parents are expressing concerns around how the writing is not, it's not being transferred into their writing abilities. And it could be the grammar, it could be spelling, because a lot of kids are not knowing how to spell words. And it could be a lot of things. So there's, there seems to be a big disconnect between the reading and then their ability to write, just as well as their ability to decode words and read and make sense out of all of that.
Agreed. So this program, one of the things we liked about it is that it doesn't have a workbook. So the work, the writing and spelling and word sorts are transferred into a notebook. Because we, we had a long discussion about like actually handwriting and spelling the words that you're actually decoding. So there is a dictation piece, and there's, and it's throughout each lesson that, that is taught. But it's really, it's, it's an important part of this program to be able to spell.
Okay.
Maybe I didn't make that clear enough.
And then the other thing was, if the three to five for the program was selected, like, did you, did we select those grades? Like, why didn't it extend to like six? Or like, I'm just seeing this as a positive thing, so I'm like, can we extend it to six?
Maybe.
If there was a long, like, or is that the way the curriculum is set up from the vendor?
Uh, no, no, they go, I think they go into the middle school grades, and I'm not, I can't remember what the name of that program is, but I can look into that for you. And I think also, part of it is like needs-based, after we, we looked at what our kids can do and what they, where the gaps are. Typically, by the end of second grade, you should know all of the phonics that you need to know to move on to the next level, which is applying the phonics in multi-syllabic words and spelling multi-syllabic words. So, you know, at some point, and I'm not sure, in sixth grade, it might become more of just vocabulary, but I can look into it.
Okay, thank you.
This fits really nicely after Phonics First. Our Phonics First is 22. This fits right into where that leads off. And it'll be nice to collect some data this year in fifth grade, and then make some decisions about whether or not we need to add. I happen to like that it's a program that straddles elementary and middle, so kids will get to the middle school, no kind of routine program.
Right.
And that'll help them to just sometimes transfer just from one level and one building to another can be tricky. So I feel like this is a good one here to be, to be found in our students.
Right, no, I'm very excited about it. I just wanted to, you know, when you get excited about a good program that you, you know, we are piloting, and we're, then you think, okay, well, how can this help now enrich with the, the other things like writing and, you know, all of that? And I know spelling, writing, grammar, that's always been on the minds of families in this community, and, and the rigor around that, and, and how we can, you know, give, whether it's activities or homework around, you know, we, we ask children to read every day, but we don't really ask children to write every day.
Uh huh, uh huh.
I also, I want to build on something that Ryan had shared in his comments. You know, we are a workshop district, but we found, we found in our data with our, from our own children, and then our understanding of research around the workshop models, and then the transition of the workshop models into what they are now currently becoming, that our children, they need explicit instruction in phonics, and they need explicit grammar instruction. So we're shifting in that direction. We took the first step with Phonics First. This is our second step, and I think we're really responding to concerns that our parents expressed that align to the work products that we're seeing our students share with us. So our students are doing very well. Their reading scores are extremely high. Their writing is, is sound. However, it could be better. And we found that what we believe was missing was that explicit instruction that's not necessarily, hasn't been necessarily a component of that workshop model, but we, we started moving in the direction of integrating that explicit instruction in our work with kids, because we felt like we needed it. But now I think we're seeing the workshop start to shift in that direction as well. So I, I'm happy that Jamie and now Carol has been able to lead that work, and we haven't waited for those shifts to happen in the workshop. We've been making them ourselves, based on our feedback from our parents, our teachers, and what we're seeing in the data amongst our, our children and the work product that they're producing. So I think that, that, you know, at, at some point this, this year, one of our elementary schools will highlight this program for you in their building report. And so we'll be happy, I think, to hear from our kids about how they're experiencing this new approach in our grammar and phonics instruction, three through five. So I think it'll, it'll serve us very well. So thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now we're, bye, Carol.
Bye.
Now we're transitioning over to Justin, who will talk about our fifth grade science curriculum review and what our approach will be moving into next year, so.
Thank you, everybody, for having me. Justin Al, professional developer and K-12 Director of Science, will walk us through the curriculum review process for our fifth grade science program, and where we can hopefully adopt Smithsonian science for the classroom for our fifth grade learners. Lots of the excellent. There were many reasons why we decided to, to engage in the curriculum review. One is really rooted in the shifts in the New York State Science Learning Standards. In 2013, I'm sure you've heard that there was a big shift in science instruction and the standards with the Next Generation Science Standards, and that was from a nationwide standpoint. In 2016, New York State decided to adopt the NGSS, but make it its own. Majority of it is just about the same. However, New York State added a few additional performance expectations in to make it specific to New York State. But there's a lot of instructional shifts that go on with these new standards in our science learning and teaching. We can click on to the next slide. So some of these instructional shifts, there's two major shifts. One is, I'm going to start on the right side, that we're trying to shift our lessons from being more traditional lessons to what we call three-dimensional lessons and storylines. When we learn science, I think there was a real emphasis on the content, and that's that middle strand there, what we call the disciplinary core ideas. I think what we had done in our old school science days, if we were studying the skeletal system, we'd be handed a, a diagram of the bones and asked to label and name the bones of the skeletal system. That's that one strand, but the New York State Science Learning Standards really emphasizes that we need to assess students' ability to do all three dimensions. And it's not only what a scientist knows, which is the middle, it's also what a scientist does, and that's the science and engineering practices, and equally assess how a scientist thinks in the cross-cutting concepts, which is on the right side. So the New York State Science Learning Standards is aiming to really equally assess all three dimensions of what it is for science teaching and learning. On the left side, the other large shift there is that it's really aimed to be inquiry-driven, and even more specifically, phenomena-driven. If we can get a phenomenon to hook our students, the more local, the more authentic, the better. That's really going to drive the inquiry process to aim for them to explore science and discover science the way the science was discovered. And then within that phenomenon, you integrate all three dimensions to really amplify teaching and learning in the science classroom. So for some examples here, you're looking on the left, some classroom activities in fifth grade. Traditionally, they may have looked a little more like students would memorize Newton's laws of gravity, but with some of these shifts, it would be more along the lines of problem-solving and engineering, where students gather and analyze evidence about gravity's effect on objects with different masses. So they're still utilizing the same content, but they're doing it within the context of the science and engineering practices. Another example in life sciences, on the bottom, you can see students memorize the equation for photosynthesis in a traditional classroom, but with some of these shifts, it's more now looking towards students explain the chemistry behind photosynthesis and how it relates to the growth of plant. In our current evolving world, just memorizing raw facts is not necessarily as applicable it is to be able to use and apply them, especially as a scientist. So even if you look at the context of what the previous fifth grade unit topics, they're in the, in the transition process right now. This is actually the first year, this past year was the first year, where we were able to aim towards the new curriculum, but you can even look at the labels. You can see unit one, interactions of chemical matter, but then if you transition to the right side, you can see that each of these units start with questions. So it's inquiry-driven, and then there are overarching questions per unit, but then there's also investigative questions that the students aim to answer by exploring, collecting data, and drawing their own conclusions in the process. So this was some of the reasons why we were led to explore a fifth grade program in science. But in addition to this upcoming year, we're going to have our fifth grade learners be on two-person teams for the first time. So this is a shift where in the past years or previous years, we had a single subject area teacher. We'd have a science teacher and a math teacher, and an English teacher, or a social studies teacher, and this upcoming year, we're transitioning to a teacher teaching math and science. So because of this, we were going to end up with many or several new teachers that have never taught science before. And so the shifts in the standards is difficult or a challenge for any of the seasoned veteran to really make some of these adjustments, but for a brand-new teacher, it'd be even more challenging. So by utilizing a New York State Science Learning Standards-aligned program with an expertly-designed three-dimensional curriculum that will best support both staff and students to assure that we're going to have a rich, engaging science experience in fifth grade. So we went through a pretty extensive selection process. This is similar to what you'd seen with Carol's for Benchmark. We started in March, so it spanned a number of months. We convened a large committee. You'll see some of the applicants and those that were in the committee shortly. We researched potential options. We identified selection criteria. We met with multiple vendors, reviewed the materials, piloted them, conferred with other districts, and then ultimately tried to make a selection we thought that best fit the needs for our students here in Chautauqua. Want to thank everybody that was involved with our selection committee here. We had a large group of stakeholders between some of the fifth grade teachers that were current science teachers, some that were. large group of stakeholders between some of fifth grade teachers that were current science teachers, some that were math that were going to be science, staff developers, uh, Dr. Adam Pease, our assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction, uh, Josh Colwell Block. And ultimately our goal was to, to find a user friendly, hands-on curriculum organized into coherent storylines, which is the new terminology for units that are aligned to the new New York State Science Learning Standards and Chappaqua School District's priorities. As you look at our selection criteria, there were eighteen points that we developed with additional options for being able to, to share additional, uh, comments and concerns. But we really made an aim to have these eighteen selection criteria fit not only the New York State Science Learning Standards, but also Chappaqua, uh, district priorities. So if you see on the top left there, we, we added in that we wanted to make sure that the materials are culturally responsive. And we used this Google form to evaluate any of the vendors once they came and proposed their program to us. Uh, these are some of the, the programs that we considered and the vendors that, that pitched the program to us. Uh, all of them had pros and cons, uh, but ultimately, once you were able to collect the data from all of the selection committee members and were able to take a look at everything that everyone deems to be in line with the district priorities and the new standards. Uh, the one on the far right, Smithsonian Science for the Classroom, uh, it was very visible that that had been above and beyond, uh, the, the other programs.
For our needs in our district.
For our needs in our district.
Thank you.
Um, so Smithsonian, Smithsonian Science for the Classroom, they pride themselves in setting the standard in 3D learning and 3D assessment. Some of the positives of the program here is you've seen that the questions or the units are, are driven by questions and inquiry driven. So there are overarching questions and then investigative questions throughout. So every single day is a question that the students explore by collecting data and drawing their own conclusions. The program has both online components, but then also everything is also physical. So they provide full kits that have all materials provided to each of the teachers and students uh, that coincide with all of the curriculum materials that you could be found online, but also in handheld versions like teacher guides, student guides and student activity guides. So this provides an opportunity for all, all of our diverse learners to have different access points to the curriculum and the materials. Uh, they worked, they worked with us, uh, in a rush and they, they sent out a kit for us to pilot. Uh, the kit was how can we use the sky to navigate? Uh, and we brought in a number of teachers in June and July to do some piloting. Uh, they did not necessarily have the opportunity to do it with students because it was towards the end of the school year. Uh, however, what we did was we dug into the online platform, we dug into the physical materials and the kits. Uh, and we had the teachers develop and use some of the lessons that, uh, were provided to them in the, the curriculum materials and then deliver them to other science teachers that were there in the workshop. And we were able to provide feedback and actually ask questions as to what were some of the obstacles and what were some of the things that they liked about the curriculum. After, after we had done that, we realized that we felt, uh, Smithsonian was the best fit for us here, uh, in Chappaqua. Uh, and the reason why is because it was really in line with a lot of our district priorities, actually all of our district priorities. If you take a look, there's examples there for each of our district priorities. I'll highlight the one on the left, um, using instructional space to amplify learning. I believe that there is a great opportunity for us to, to branch out into our STEAM spaces because a lot of the, uh, the new curriculum really emphasizes engineering and problem solving and being able to take those units and move into some of the STEAM spaces and relocate the classes is a great opportunity. Also, if you look, uh, towards the middle there, K-12 academic program alignment, um, this is going to provide an opportunity for us at fifth grade to horizontally align across all, of both schools with all six, uh, science teachers to have the same curriculum and deliver the same rich, engaging instruction to all of our students. But then also for a vertical alignment from a K-12 standpoint, it will be a good way to prepare our students to fit right in the middle of the three to five and the six to eight grade bands that ultimately result in the new New York State, uh, science assessment in 2024 in fifth and in eighth grade. And those are two of the priorities, but if you can see, you can see all six are, uh, valid reasons for us to choose Smithsonian. As I mentioned ahead before, um, Carolina Biological is a sole source vendor for Smithsonian. So the online platform is technically through Carolina Science Online, and this is the only company that collaborated with Smithsonian developing these units. And also the materials are purchased by the Carolina Biological vendor, um, which they're the only company that is, that is, uh, permitted to sell the the materials and kits that coincide with the units, uh, found in Smithsonian curriculum units. So the total cost for the program is thirty nine thousand, eight dollars and thirty cents. Uh, this is an initial one-time purchase. To start, this provides us with the kits, uh, for the entire year, the shipping and handling, full access to the online platform, customer service and four full days of professional learning. This provides us access that is ongoing to the online platform. So it's a one-time purchase where, uh, future years, the kits, uh, they contain materials that are consumables and non-consumables. The non-consumable was kept and stored by the science teachers in their rooms, but the consumables need to be, uh, refurbished. So the approximate year-to-year expense after the first year would be roughly six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and forty-four cents. Um, give or take depending upon the number of consumable materials, uh, each year, but that would include shipping and handling of kits and materials and continued customer support and continued access to the online platform, which is not, never needed to be renewed. That's always going to be available to our, our students.
Thank you, Justin. So are there any questions for Justin around the program or the selection process? That he can help answer for you? Go ahead, Ryan.
Thanks, Justin. I'm, I'm thrilled to see this sort of like inquiry-based science coming to our district. I wanted, you, you did some of the strategic priorities, but since you highlighted the culturally responsive thing as a district priority, I was just curious to hear that specific lineup. Like, what makes the Smithsonian and the Carolina work short responsive to that strategic priority?
There's a number of reasons. So the two that I highlighted here is that, uh, there are certain actual units that are rooted in environmental justice. So the one in fifth grade specifically is how can we provide water to those in need? And that's, that's where the unit actually starts. So that's one of the units that I believe they're going to start the year with, based on the work that we had done with our fifth grade teachers. But in addition to that, the online platform also provides, uh, access to, um, multilingual, access to, uh, activity sheets and student guides that are in multiple languages. And then in addition to that, uh, there's an immersive reader where the students can have access and students that, uh, with special needs, they need to be able to access uh, reading levels, there's differentiated reading levels. And then on top of that, there's also the highlight and read aloud option that you can utilize on your computer.
So I have a question. Um, so again, first thing I'm thinking, this sounds great. Um, what it, what are we replacing? By taking this on, is it the science twenty-one?
Good question. So, um, science twenty-one for us has been K through four. Uh, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade, we've had a homegrown curriculum that we've utilized for years. Um, fifth grade last year, we were in a little bit of a challenging place in that we were having teachers that were going to be pilot, piloting the two-person teams. And yet this upcoming year is going to be the first year where we were going to shift from what was the older curriculum to the new curriculum. So in that case, what we had, we had done is we allowed our teachers, we said, let's pile forward and let's put together our own homegrown curriculum again. And we did that this current year, this past year, um, myself and some of the teachers. And we collaborated on putting together our best three dimensional lessons and, and storylines that we could. But it was a challenge to be able to pull that together, uh, within the time span. And then ultimately, it's not necessarily replacing, uh, uh, science twenty-one. It was more of a homegrown developed curriculum here in Chappaqua.
Right. So it's actually giving more structure to something that maybe teachers had more free range over.
Right. Very, very needed. You know, I, I think teachers were designing lessons, um, based on the standards, but there was a lot of, uh, inconsistency across the grade level of student experiences based on who their faculty member was, which is why it made sense. And thank you, Justin, for involving the faculty and moving forward. So we're all moving in the same direction. And that students are having a similar experience, knowing that there's autonomy in every, um, classroom in how teachers move forward with particular lesson topics and design. But this at least gives us a, a consistent approach, just like we, um, moved in, uh, a similar direction for social studies. Right. Based on the strategic plan and identified need that we had to, uh, be more aligned vertically as well as horizontally. So.
I, I think it's great because I think it's very important that we start, um, building and sort of readying our students to prepare them for really in a more rigorous way where it's, you know, what you mentioned, explicit instruction and also, um, in the different, um, domains, right? And, and the different, um, subject matters. And we are, you know, we do a lot of work around math and, you know, when we talk, think about STEAM, we have to think about science as well. So I'm also curious to know if, if this goes well, if we have opportunities to extend to six, seven and eight.
So it's currently, this is K through five, is there Smithsonian Science for the classroom. Um, there is a program that is for middle school specifically. However, it's, um, the six through eight grade band. And it's an entirely different online access program and it's not necessarily as organized and put together quite like this because of the fact that six through eight, um, the different middle schools across the country, they don't put the curriculum into grade bands. They just clumped six through eight altogether. And then the schools ultimately redistribute the performance expectations at each grade level as they see appropriate. So this program only goes up to fifth grade.
So Adam and I have been in some significant conversations about, uh, science instruction, particularly in grade eight, and are there certain adjustments we want to consider making based on some of the shifts we've made in algebra? It doesn't make sense to have all students in, in eighth grade take a high school biology class, um, that would open up the science electives for our students at the high school. So, um, I just, as a preview, there are significant conversations of what our upper level science courses may look like in the future around, um, our middle school and our middle level. But we also thought that it would be important for us, before we began having those conversations, um, with the Board of Education to understand what our strategic priorities were going to be based on our new process this year. So we have, but we have been exploring that and thinking about that, um, as, as a potential pathway forward for us to discuss collectively as a community.
Just one more question.
Sure.
So since you've mentioned that it is a K through five program, did we ever have conversations around if we would switch out science twenty-one that we have currently right now from K to four and just make it all uniform from, and that they start at K and then bring it all the way up to five?
That's a good question. So science twenty-one has been embedded in our, in our elementary program. And I think that, um, at this point, based on the instructional shifts that we've made in phonics and in social studies, shifting science at the same time would probably be pretty difficult for, for elementaries that they couldn't do it. But I think a scaffold approach is probably more appropriate. So understanding, um, and successfully supporting this in fifth grade will probably open conversations up to see if it makes sense at the elementary level after they have had, um, additional cycles through our social studies and phonics program. Cause right now our, our kids are having a, a solid experience in science. Um, at the elementary level, though, one of the things we are talking about in terms of our science and social, so, social studies, um, approach are our expectations around the frequency at which those courses are being covered within the context of the school day. So we have different, um, needs identified at the elementary level than the middle school right now. But at some point there might, it might make sense for there to be alignment of the approach across, um, our spectrum of grade levels. But just at this time, we're not, that we're not ready to have that conversation yet.
Can I, can I speak to that too, Kristin?
Sure.
Um, when we had the vendors come in, science twenty-one was one of the vendors. And I think it's important to, to note that we viewed it under the lines of our, our fifth grade group and, and it's our fifth grade group is unique in that they're in the middle school, um, even though they're in the elementary grade band for science. So I think we've been, we've been extraordinarily happy with science twenty-one and the way they've been able to deliver for science instruction for us, the elementary school. Our fifth grade group has access to certain spaces and different instruction and different time schedules that ultimately Smithsonian seem to be a better fit for.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going to ask, which I, I, I love the, the integration and the instructional shift in. And I know you mentioned that built into this is professional development as part of this package. So will, will, will everybody be up and running and ready to go? And how easy is this for the teachers to transition to this?
There's always going to be a learning curve. I mean, the idea here is to provide access to as many materials and options in curriculum and resources that we can. And the program ultimately has access to just about anything you can think of. There's even a tab for common misconceptions. And there's a tab for background knowledge you need for the module. So the, the online platform and the physical materials provide resources for the teachers to be able to engage in. But then ultimately the pedagogy is also a shift for teachers who never taught science before. So that's where we're going to have to lay out a, a year-long calendar and make sure that we have checking days with the professional learning team from Smithsonian and some of us on the professional learning, the professional development team to make sure that we have reflection and continued progress checks with our teachers as they move through the whole process to the air.
All right. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Justin. We appreciate it. Thank you for, uh, presenting tonight on behalf of the teachers in the central office. So now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Have a good night. Adam, are you coming up? Sean Moore? Okay. All right. So now we're going to do a brief overview. I gotta get to the, we're gonna just move forward here. Of our, our new, um, communication system for parents. Let me just keep going. Okay. Which is Parent Square. And this has been, um, about a year and a half in the making, based on feedback that we received from the communications committee and our subgroup of the communications committee around. It started with the, um, excessive emails that we were sending out and the inability to organize those emails in a meaningful way. And then we started kind of branching out to some other communication, um, issues that we were having that were central to our office. And so, um, Josh and David Lee's and now Adam have been, uh, working with us to migrate to a new operating system that we think will address many of the concerns, concerns that the communication committee was, uh, grappling with and some of the issues that we've been having, particularly around emergency notifications. So, um, Adam, thank you for coming to the stage and I'm going to.
All right. I should know how to do this. All right. So, um, good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Ackman shared, um, Parent Square is a new communications platform that we are anticipating rolling out this fall throughout the district. And it is a really powerful tool that is going to, I think, solve a lot of problems, address concerns and help to centralize our communication for families in one place in a really easy and efficient way. And so I'll be sharing some of the details of, of the platform and our next steps. So Parent Square is the next generation communication platform for the district. It replaces multiple current communications platforms such as Blackboard and Campus Messenger. And I'll get into more details about all these points. It streamlines communications, making them easier to find because while it sends emails and emergencies, phone calls and text messages, it's also app-based. So all communication is archived in one easy to find place. We don't have to search emails. We don't have to wonder, oh, who sent from the high school an email last Tuesday about something? Everything is really easy to find for families as well as for teachers, administrators and students where, where, used that way as well. It adds more, uh, more choice and powerful tools. Some of those choices are around how parents choose to receive information. You can choose to opt in to get a notification for every time something is posted related to your student or to receive a simple daily digest, consolidate that information. And you have the full control over when and how you receive that information. You also have control over language and automatic translation. Um, so it really addresses multiple needs and is a way for us to make sure that we're communicating more efficiently uh, and more appropriately with our families. It's safe, secure and easy to use. It ties into our current student information system. Um, and was, is something we purchased through Lyric, through an approved vendor and really meets all of our cybersecurity, uh, our cybersecurity plan and is, is really, really powerful. So I'll share a little bit more. So in Parents Square, we have three main, uh, modes of communication. You have posts, which are mass communications. Think of any e-blast you would get from the district, um, from a building, from a district level. You have messaging, two-way communication where a parent can respond and it's the equivalent of a private chat, but it's archived within our systems. And you have alerts, which are emergency alerts, which override all settings. If we have a closure for a snow day, an early dismissal, the train track is down. No matter how you opt into the settings, you now get an emerg, you get the phone call, the text and everything because we've, we can override those settings, but outside of that, parents have control. And we can differentiate those settings at every level. So for example, we could decide as a district that parents could reply to some messages and not others, that students could reply, could reply to messages in some cases, but not others. It's really different, differentiated uh, based on that user level. Additionally, um, as I said earlier, it's app-based. You can download the app on an iOS device or Android device. Nobody needs the app. It allows you to do a lot more with it. It provides some advanced features. For a parent who does not download the app, they still would receive the email communication just like they do right now. So no one has to do anything extra to receive effective communication, but it allows a lot more control and opportunity for the parents and families who would like that, uh, through the app. So the way it works is it ties into Infinite Campus and every user will get an email when we're ready to launch this that asks them to activate their account. If you activate your account, it simply ties you into the app. It lets us know that you've downloaded the app. It gives us some data on family engagement. But again, if, uh, parents do not download the app, do not activate the account. But again, if parents do not download the app, do not activate the account, they still get the communication. There's no barrier to anyone receiving communications from the district. From there, here are some screenshots of what this looks like for families on the app view. So you can see here, you can see here on the left, a parent name, and it would list the multiple schools that a student may be enrolled in. In the middle are some examples of messages. We've blacked out the names of those individuals for this example. And on the right, we have different groups that students may belong to, belong in. And Parent Square will automatically import the information from Infinite Campus. So all of our classes, all of our schools, and other groups that we create based on any data in Infinite Campus will automatically be here. One of the really important value points of this is, right now, for some, in some cases, we have to look into a campus, find an email address, copy it to another location, send an email. Because all that information is automatically connected here, it eliminates that extra work. But more importantly, it's more secure. It eliminates the opportunity for any errors. We don't need to decide, wonder, are we, you know, the right person? We don't have to control any of that data at individual level. It's all automated for us based on the campus. If a student changes classes, if they change schools, if they move and come back, as Infinite Campus is updated, everything's updated daily for us. So it really relieves a lot of that administrative work from the buildings and from teachers, and it's a lot more power both for the, for the schools and for families. You'll see here on the left is an example of a post, "Good morning." It's a sample post from a sixth-grade classroom. There are calendar features, and there are some really robust help articles and tutorials. We'll, of course, provide a lot of onboarding and support for families and for teachers. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. There's a lot within that app that makes it really easy and easy to use. I spoke a little bit about the translation, just to give you an example. The way it works is it takes the language of, that a family has, the preferred language in Infinite Campus, and automatically translates to that language. But it also gives any user the opportunity to, then with a click of a button, translate to multiple other languages. This is a screenshot of just a few of those languages. There are about 50 languages within the system. Similarly, on the right here, you'll see some of the, similarly in terms of how we have choice, how we can customize settings. You could, for example, say, oh, my high school student, I want the four o'clock daily digest. But my elementary student, I want to know every time that classroom teacher or that school or whatever individual might be using it, posts in a, that as related to your student. So you have, as a, as a parent, you would have full control of all the settings, barring any emergency where we would then send an emergency alert, similar to how we do now. This is an example of a classroom page. It's taken from Parent Square's kind of demo environment, so it's not our page, just to give you a sense of what it looks like. It looks very much like a Facebook or social media feed, but it is, of course, closed to us, secure, allows us to send messages without any identifiable information for students, and reduces any opportunity, much of the opportunity for any sort of data breaches and errors, and really streamlines that communication. All of the posts are searchable. So if you think, oh, man, somebody in the district sent a post about, I don't know, about basketball practice last Tuesday, I think, and I can't find it, you don't have to search your email and wonder which administrator or staff member it was. You can simply search your post in Parent Square, find the post that was sent to you. You will only be sent posts related to the groups or classes in which your students are affiliated. So you're not going to see posts for a school you don't have a child in, but families would see posts for anything related to a class that comes out of Infinite Campus or a school or other groups that students may be able to join, such as for athletics in the future, is something that we'll talk about as well. So the plan right now is that this fall, we'd be rolling out Parent Square for district and building-level communication. So it would replace Campus Messenger and Blackboard as our mass communication tool. So for example, if Dr. Ackerman says an update on the, before we, right before we return to school, to parents, if we send one from the high school or from any building, we would be, we would be looking to Parent Square as that tool to send those messages. It will also be the tool we use for emergency alerts to start the school year. What we've been discussing, and we're looking for feedback from teachers, and as we're working forward into the school year, is the role it has in classrooms, because in the high school canvas does a lot of the communication tools here, but also a lot of instructional resources, and is really powerful on the instructional side in a different way than Parent Square. So we don't want to introduce competing platforms that don't add, add really clear value. So we're similarly assessing at the elementary level if this will be used in classrooms and how and when, based on feedback on how group classroom is being used and meetings with teachers and our administrators. But there's a lot of power to those options in the future as we explore those. So here's an example to show you how easy it is to use an emergency alert in four clicks. Number one, we click the plus to add a post. We select the type of post. In this case, we would say urgent smart alert, which means it overrides everything. We would, we would choose who we're sending it to. You can send it to the whole district, to a school. We even have our buses loaded in. Anything from Infinite Campus is loaded right in here. So if you need to message five buses that cross over a particular road about an emergency, you're able to do that with a couple clicks. You type in your message and you send urgent alert. It takes seconds. It's much easier, more efficient than many of the tools we have now. And it also decentralizes the access to those tools so that all administrators and selected clerical staff members will be able to use the, will be able to have access to whatever level of communication we, as a district, decide. So in terms of next steps here, we will, I've already started meeting with the administrators at the district level and in every building so far. After tomorrow, I'll have met with every building-level administrator to share, to have them log in, to share, Parent Square get feedback on ways they see it being valuable, and start to train them, as well as clerical staff in multiple buildings. We're planning on training for teachers on Superintendent's Conference Day, as well as ongoing support throughout the start of the year. And then for the community, we would look to have email invitations and a letter go out to families before the school year begins. And then we would post resources and videos asynchronously for families, as well as recording webinars and hosting office hours. So anyone with questions that, anyone who needs help and support as we get started with this new platform would be able to do so. In the meantime, Campus Messenger is not going anywhere. Part of that reason is because it's tied to Infinite Campus. We can't remove it. It's part of the service we're using for so many other things, as a student information service. But it's also our backup tool. So the plan would be that we put out a message on Campus Messenger, letting everyone know to look for the Parent Square notice, to let us know if they don't receive it. So I have a redundancy as we transition, so there's no gaps in communication in any way. And of course, we'd be scheduling feedback opportunities with all of our stakeholder groups as we begin this process. So in addition to being searchable and having the archive, we're also able to then post static resources within Parent Square if we choose to. So we can, one of the things that will lead us to think about is the role of the website as we look for website redesign later this year, and how Parent Square plays into that and the opportunities that it allows us there. In terms of data, it provides really robust data analytics of how many of our families are active in Parent Square, how many of them have accurate, have valid communication information in their phone numbers, email addresses, and it will also let us know about their engagement with our messages. So it'll provide really important data for us to really assess and audit, how do we communicate as a district? How effective is that communication? Additionally, Parent Square has a lot of advanced features that we look to explore over time. One example that will be really important in the beginning of the year, if we do roll this out in elementary classrooms, is there is a parent-teacher conference scheduler. So right there in a platform we're already using, that teachers and parents will be using, it's not an extra feat, it's not an extra, it's rolled in right here in Parent Square. That's something that the elementary staff is really excited about so far. We'll be looking to transition from Sports U to Parent Square for our athletic teams. That will happen in the winter so that there's no communication gap. So while, because a lot of our sports are already beginning, we want to make sure we're really thoughtful in that process. We're hoping to pilot it with some select teams during the fall. And we've been meeting with Jamie Block around that and planning for it. There are opportunities for secure document transmission. So the long-term hope is that we're able to pull in, bring in IEPs, report cards, Infinite Campus backpack securely within Parent Square, so it would then reduce the logins that parents need to access information about students. There's opportunities for common forms and newsletters and templates. One piece with this will be, will have consistent logos and branding for heading, headers on all our newsletters that look the same and feel the same, to add some consistency to our messaging. There is a community groups feature where we can upgrade our community alerts rather than e-blasts that we send to, send to groups that aren't actively maintained. We would allow, allow individuals to opt in potentially to groups that we would be able to differentiate, such as a community news group, and emergency alerts and closings group, an alumni group, but an athletics group, so that individuals who are not currently in the school system still can keep up with our news and get those alerts if they wish. But we don't have to maintain that information for them. They are able to self-select into those opportunities. And lastly, like I mentioned, the website, but also social media integration. There's lots of opportunity there for us to rethink, well, what does our website look like if we have this closed environment that houses so much of this information in really powerful ways? In terms of how this is going to impact the other technology we use, these are all things that Parent Square will, over time, be able to replace and reduce our use of. Blackboard Connect would be eliminated. Campus Messenger would not be used, but it would still be our redundancy, our backup tool. As I said earlier, it's part of the campus, so it's not going anywhere. But we would all move to Parent Square so we have a consistent platform messaging. We would transition from Sports U if we needed to use health screeners in the future. We would not need Oprahu anymore. Parent Square would be able to do that as well. Conference scheduler for the elementary schools. Instead of email for document transmission and for large group emails, like at the high school, I could say we send HD faculty emails all the time. Instead, we would look to use Parent Square for those large group emails, because again, now we have the archive, searchable, all in one place. And lastly, digital forums. So a lot of the paper forums and outdated forums, we'd be able to modernize, bring into Parent Square, and really bring all this information together in one place. Some of these platforms have a cost associated with them, others do not. But the ones that do have costs, we've highlighted here for you. So Parent Square has a cost of $7,776 annually, plus a one-time $1,500 setup cost. Oprahu, Blackboard Connect, and the PTC Fast Scheduling, which is the tool we're using at the elementary schools for our conferences, all have an annual cost that totals $26,614. So Parent Square would result in an $18,000, $18,838 annual savings by reducing all of these tools.
So are there any questions for Adam? We're going to, this is going to be a, from what we understand, and Adam Pease currently uses this at its school, it's a very user-friendly, easy device, should be a smooth rollout. But we have a contingency plan in place in case we have any hiccups. So go ahead, Hillary. Yeah, extremely, extremely user-friendly. He actually showed us his own organizational.
Yeah, we were, I was going to say, for people to ask questions, but Kaylee and I got, got a preview. And thank you again, Adam. It was a great presentation for us. We had a meeting of the Communications Committee to go over this. And I, the consolidation of all the information, the streamlining, the ease of the use of the app, it's, it's all very appealing. And Adam was helpful mentioning also how, Adam Pease, how it's used in his current district, and really how easy it is to use. And I appreciate you, Adam, adding this slide in terms of the cost savings, which is also fantastic for us. So I think it's a win all the way around. But I, I mean, I think Kaylee and I were very happy seeing the preview. But if anyone else has any questions, I wanted you guys to go ahead.
I guess my only question is, in families where there are two parents, can both have access?
Yes. Any, any setup we have in Infinite Campus carries over here. So the families who have two parents in Infinite Campus would have the same, same communities, whatever communication is received in Infinite Campus would carry over. So definitely.
Just to piggyback off of your question, I think we asked, so each parent or each user will have their own preferences? So if you wanted a daily digest versus, you know, I want it every time somebody sends something out, you can control that separately, which was important.
Adam, could you say, you, you sort of teased the possibility of a little bit more two-way interaction. Were you, when you were talking about that, did you mean those things at the very end when it came to like document sign-offs and stuff? Or was there another way that a, a parent could reach out and expect some, I don't know, I'll call it customer service from the district?
So there is, there is a direct messaging feature, which we can turn on in whatever instances we deem appropriate. So I'll show you right here, the middle is an example of that, messages. So for example, if we did use this in an elementary classroom, we could potentially have messages on, and parents would be able to send a direct message to a teacher, and teachers would be able to reply. You can do it as a group of shared, shared parents who all see each other in there, or more commonly, we would use like a BCC. So there's different options for their four-two-way communication, whereas the posts are typically a one-way outgoing communication.
The other comment I was going to make is I love the idea of exploring how to use this to drive people to the website. I mean, in its new form, I think that you guys have such a wealth of stuff there that I think most of our community doesn't, it's just too hard to tackle. So like figuring out a way to exemplify in a feed that comes in smaller bits could be exciting way to, you know, get people more informed over time. So looking forward to that part.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam.
For presenting. And I'll take that clicker back. And then I'd like to invite Eric and Joe up as we conclude the superintendent's report. So we just want to review some of the important dates coming up. Okay, so just so our families are aware, as we begin to transition, our sports registrations are open. Our football program begins on August 20th. They have a two-day head start under the New York State Athletic Association guidelines for beginning. All of our other sports begin on the 22nd. We begin to welcome our new families in grades one through 12 to the district at an event on the 24th. And then on the 31st, we open up for our staff. And we have two superintendent conference days, and then we have the return of our students the Tuesday after Labor Day. So that concludes our superintendent report. I want to thank Justin, Adam, and Carol for presenting some pretty big shifts in our, in our communication and instructional approaches, particularly at the three-through-five level and all the work that took place to lead up to those decisions that we made collectively with our teachers. And we're excited to share with the board our progress as we move through the school year. But now we're going to transition over to Eric and Joe, who will be sharing with you our building conditions survey and five-year plan, with the understanding that we're meeting on Thursday in more detail about our building conditions. And Eric's report to decide how to plan forward for the district based on what he's presenting this evening. And I also would like to mention that this report will highlight some of the areas that we have been concerned about that I presented in our budget process, that are larger expense items for us that deal with the brick and mortar of our, of our facilities that are necessary for us to be able to address in order to keep our buildings open and functioning for our students. So Eric, welcome.
Hi, Eric Hyer, AGU Architects Principal. Great to have, thanks for having me here this evening. I figured out that I've actually been working in the school district now for 22 years. So thank you so much for the trust that you have in myself and our firm over that extended period of time. Here tonight to talk about building condition surveys. New York State requires, New York State Education Department requires every five years for all the public school districts to do a building condition survey in five year for. The last time Chapter B did that was in 2015, which was seven years ago. The reason for the extended time between that one and this one this year is that the state department decided that they didn't want to receive every single school district building condition survey all at the same time, the same year. And so they decided in 2020 to spread them out and do about one-fifth of them every year over the course of a five-year period. Chapter B received a 2022 calling. So one thing that we do is a five-year capital plan report. And what that is, is the state department wants to make sure that each school district maintains their buildings in satisfactory condition. 2015, for example, when we did the report, prior to issuing that report, there were a couple items that the school district needed to address. We addressed those before. And so when the report ultimately went in, all buildings were listed in satisfactory condition. Happy to say that right now, all, all six schools are in satisfactory condition, so that when we submit this report later this, this fall, that we'll be able to say to the state department that all buildings are satisfactory. It's a binary system. It's either unsatisfactory or satisfactory. You don't make good or excellent or awesome, it's just satisfactory. That's, that's the best we can do. They, state ed wants us to address health and life, life safety issues. And we categorize these into four different categories depending on the replacement timing associated with each. the replacement timing associated with each item. And this is over the course of the next five years. So our next survey will happen in 2027, assuming that they continue to follow the plan that they currently have. Most successful capital improvement plans don't only address the infrastructure issues that we're looking at during our building condition surveys, but they also address special projects, educational improvements. You just heard communications, other items that the school district and individual schools would like to also address or recommend addressing as, as part of a larger capital improvement project. The last item on this is industrial standard maintenance. It states that somewhere between two and five percent annually should be spent related to the replacement value of the district's buildings to maintain the facility in satisfactory condition. District, as you know, comprises of six schools. You have a total of 810,000 gross square feet between those schools with an average age just over 60 years. Seven Bridges is now 19 years old and the Bell School is 97. In 2025, it will have its 100th anniversary. The replacement value of those six buildings is almost $500 million. And how do we arrive at that? It's basically the gross square feet times $450 a square foot, which is an average construction cost right now for school facilities in our region, plus the project, other project costs, which are professional fees, contingencies, escalation, et cetera. So if you went back to that previous slide where we're saying two to five percent replacement, let's just say we address one percent a year. And one percent a year is $5 million over the course of a five-year period of time, that's $25 million. So every five years, you should be looking at spending at least $25 million on your facilities just to maintain them in that satisfactory condition. And then when you're looking at special projects, et cetera, you're looking at a cost on top of that $25 million a year. So we categorize these into three different categories. Category A, which are the highest priority items, which include life safety. Examples of life safety would be a roof replacement. If a roof is leaking, it's gonna cause further problems if we don't address that right away. Another may be sidewalk that has heaved. So students or faculty members are walking in that sidewalk potentially triggered. That would be something that you would wanna address right away. Other items might be fire alarm systems that have failed or other issues like that potentially. Health and safety and property damage, these are items that are at the end of their useful life, could be mechanical systems and really need to be addressed and replaced within this five-year period of time. Category B are special projects. These are the educational improvements and other projects that you'd like to do. They aren't infrastructure, they're, they're really program-related. Are C, category C are the priority threes and fours. And these are items that are starting to get to the end of their useful life, but may still have another five-plus years in them. So that you should be aware that they're projects that should be addressed at some point in the near future and probably in your next building condition survey in 2027, for example. These might shift from a priority three down to a priority two, and really need to be addressed at that point. Priority four, desirable upgrades, it may be things that are, don't. It might be a carpet that's maybe unsightly, but still is serviceable. Joe will attest to this, but this is a very small piece of a very large document that we will be submitting to the school district. This is an Excel spreadsheet, it's a living document, which addresses every single infrastructure item and each of the different buildings. And so this is an example of Forest Grilling High School. And on the left, it shows the, the location in the building. Next is a description of the item. So that's all the individual items that we, we have noticed within our survey. We prioritize those as well. And then there's direct cost, which is the first blue box. And the way that we arrive at those direct costs is a quantity and a unit cost. Those unit costs get reviewed on an annual basis. We review them with an independent cost estimator that updates based on projects in the region and costs associated with the individual items. And that develops a direct part cost number. From there, we also then have to increase that number by the project costs, again, professional fees, contingency escalation to come up with a total budget. The escalation is based on the priority number. So if you have a priority one or two, you're gonna be addressing those in the next couple of years. And so the escalation will be lower than if it's a priority three or four, where you might not be addressing it for five-plus years. So the escalation typically on an annual basis is plus or minus four percent. What we've seen this last calendar year is eight and quarter percent. So it's been staggering and we're carrying actually five percent for this next year, thinking that it's still gonna be above average. And then from there, we'll hopefully get back down to that average, which again is plus or minus four percent typically annually. The next six slides are six different schools. Grafflin is 60 years old, approximately 100,000 square feet. Infrastructure issues and recommendations generally that we saw have to do with replacing all the roofs at Grafflin. On, at all schools, there are communications upgrades. Exterior upgrades here, Grafflin includes some exterior door replacement, a greenhouse retaining wall that is started to fail and repaving play areas. Interior upgrades include selective replacement of classrooms, selective classroom acoustic ceiling replacement. There's a partial roof replacement, the remaining sections that haven't currently been done, being done. Some mechanical system upgrades, some site work associated with paving and roadway, parking lot paving. And as I mentioned, all schools are getting communication upgrades. Roaring Brook was built in 51, a little bit smaller, just under 74,000 square feet. Here, it's proposed to replace all roofs. Interior upgrades include accessibility and egress upgrades, toilet room work, painting the classrooms and replacing acoustic ceiling tiles at the lower level classrooms. Roaring Brook was built in 51, a little bit smaller, just under 74,000 square feet. Here, it's proposed to replace all roofs. Interior upgrades include accessibility and egress upgrades, toilet room work, painting the classrooms and replacing acoustic ceiling tiles at the lower level classrooms. There's also some mechanical system upgrades associated with providing ventilators to classrooms that don't currently have them. Some site work, including playground surfaces, some fencing in the rear of the property and repairs to stone terrace. Bell, in three years, will be 100 years old. Have a big celebration. Still a beautiful building, a great location. Proposing fewer infrastructure recommendations here, but they include interior upgrades, accessibility egress upgrades, replacing first floor classroom and ceiling work and casework, replacing casework and selective third floor classrooms, replacing some mechanical equipment as well as communications. Seven Bridges is youngest building, it's almost 160,000 square feet. There's only a few items here on the list. One is repairs to the gym roof. There's interior upgrades associated with carpet replacement building-wide and communications upgrades. Forest Grilling is by far our largest building, 226,000 plus square feet. There's several infrastructure recommendations, including partial roof replacements. These are the K building roof and all the canopies, the connecting canopies between the buildings. You're also aware of the fact that we are planning to rebuild the bridge between the F and J building. There's site work associated with repaving student parking lots. There's a canopy in the main courtyard, which is proposed to be removed and the infrastructure that's associated and attached to it relocated underground most likely. There's communication upgrades and interior upgrades, including selective flashing quarter floor and ceiling replacement for toilet room upgrades and some mechanical system upgrades. Sure you can all see and read that. But this is one of two typical examples of a project table. This one for Roaring Brook Elementary School. What you see boxed in red are the category A or the priority ones and twos and what the actual projects are, but that they're a priority one and two and what the total project costs are associated with each of those individual items. In blue is the special projects, which we will talk about in a second. And then in orange at the bottom are the deferred items, which would be the priority three and priority four items. It's similar in Bell. I'm sure you will get this report and be able to look at it a little bit more closely. But again, in, in red are the category one items, blue are the B of special projects, and in orange are the deferred items. This gets us to a summary page, which talks about the category A items, which are the priority ones and priority twos. You can see at the top of the page that says approximately $24.5 million for those priority ones and priority twos. In red in that box, it lists out the individual costs for priority ones and priority twos for each of those buildings, with priority ones being a total of about 9.4 million and priority twos being approximately $15.1 million for that total of 24.5. And this was not a plan, but when we talked about, so doing about one percent improvements on an annual basis and that's $5 million over the course of five years, that's $25 million. This aligns generally with that improving one, one percent per year. We could do more. If you just briefly look below to the deferred items, those priority threes and priority fours include escalation, not just for the 22 and 23 years, which the priority ones and twos do, but also includes an additional five years escalation at four percent annually. So that if you did these projects in 28 or 29 period of time, it includes that escalation. So those numbers here, which total $53.6 million at deferred, if you were to do those today or as part of the priority one, two items, that number actually would decrease substantially, it'd be about $40 million. So the escalation is real and it's something that you should just know. So there's a special project recommendations, which is a category B at five of the six schools. At the three elementary schools, we're proposing covered pavilions. These are outside pavilions. With COVID, we all learned how to be outside a lot more and spread out. This covered pavilion would give it, pavilions would give us an opportunity to do more outside education in a semi-protective way. You'll see a slide for that in a second. At Bell, the suggestion was to relocate the cafeteria, which is on the lowest level right now, from one end of the building to another, provide a small addition. And so we'll talk about that in a second. And then finally, at Greeley, proposing a single point of entry or having a discussion about a single point of entry and security upgrades associated with that. So this is a typical example of a covered pavilion to protect outdoor education space. The size of it would be to be determined, but we did go out there, talk to a vendor and have a regular standard size that would house a fairly good portion of the population outside at any given time. If you look at the, this is an aerial of the Bell School. Currently, actually where that eye drop is, is generally where the existing cafeteria is on the lowest level. It doesn't have ideal light or location. One of the issues with location is that actually most of the servicing, because it's down the level, actually happens at the other end of the building. Waste, for example, gets wheeled from one end of the building to the other to, to go into dumpsters. Where you can see the red box there is where there's a currently modular building, which is not in current use. And the proposal here would be to provide a new cafeteria commons addition. Remove and replace the, the NADA with a permanent structure for cafeteria. Reuse the existing east wing there or south wing of the building for a kitchen and serving line. And so that cafeteria could have great natural light. It would be more adjacent to the outdoor play space and could also be serviced and used by the community independent of the rest of the, the school as a facility for meetings like we're having this evening. Of course, Greeley, the one point of entry currently, well, the original building built in 1957 was sort of a California-style open set of buildings, which had covered canopies to provide some protection as you walk between buildings. In the early 2000s, each of those buildings were connected, with the exception of the gymnasium, to create kind of a U-shaped loop that loops from the main office all the way around and ultimately connecting back to the cafeteria. The one connection point that doesn't currently exist is the connection between the cafeteria and the main office and auditorium, as well as the connection between the auditorium and the gymnasium. So there's a proposal to make that connection and basically be able to provide an interior, interior connection to all facilities on campus and have one point of entry to Greeley Campus Building. Those special projects at the three elementary schools, each of those pavilions is a little over $300,000 all-in. The Bell project, which doesn't just include the, the expansion and relocation of the cafeteria, but it's also renovations to the balance of that lower level. The cafeteria would be converted into other educational spaces, as well as the auxiliary cafeteria and some of the other educational spaces on that lower level could be renovated. It's a plan number of a little over $7.5 million. And the, the single point of entry really And the the single point of entry really is a similar number when you have all-in costs of a little over seven and a half million dollars for a total of special projects budget of sixteen point three million dollars. That includes escalation, contingency, et cetera. We do have one note here in red at the bottom, which says, due to current inflation, construction materials, we recommend that you may want to carry an additional allowance or contingency in there of uh up to ten percent, just because in in this last year some material costs have gone up substantially. It's been very difficult to uh to project out several years what the actual cost of construction may be.
Hey Eric, uh besides the inflation costs that you're talking about, what about availability? Would that push out the uh the 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 project times?
Availability.
But besides the inflation costs, what about a product availability if we're going to do these projects? Would that push out the uh completion times or not? Are we seeing that?
Uh we don't expect so. A a typical um capital approval project like this will will take somewhere plus or minus four years to build from from, you know, pre-pre bond discussions through uh initial planning, C-MAC design, submission to the state ed, getting bids, and then the actual phasing of construction. So if you were to immense a project in uh later this year or early next year, you probably are going to be looking out approximately four years before all the projects are completed.
Cause I know like Christine had to go to the Queens like pick up glass when for one or, right Christine?
What?
Pardon me?
I said that was something.
Yep, so.
Uh so the total between the priority ones and the priority twos, as as well as the special projects here is plus or minus forty million dollars. And here it lists them out individually again. For the priority ones and twos, a twenty-four point five. The elementary school pavilions at a little under a million dollars and the Bell and Greeley projects each being a little over seven and a half million dollars.
So the girl, the goal of tonight was for Eric just to give you an overview of what the um the building plan looks like. He has a, has to present a final report for your review. But we thought that it was important to begin to talk about particularly priority one and two items because they're so expensive. Um immediately to determine how we wanted to move forward, which is why we have a work session scheduled on Thursday with not just Eric, but with our bond counsel, with our attorneys, just to talk about like where do we go from here, knowing that we have some of our building facility areas, particularly our roofing system that needs to be addressed ASAP, that can't can't really happen within the context of the budget process. So I'm with, is there any questions for Eric? In the immediate term, knowing that we're going to have a a larger discussion about this on on Thursday that you'd like him to answer or at least prepare for for Thursday's discussion? Or Joe? Thank you, Joe, for being here.
Well, is Joe going to be there Thursday?
Yes, he is.
Okay, cause I have like a hundred questions, but they're more appropriate for like a conversation in a work session.
And how long like to does it take to to put all of this together? Over what period of time did you examine all these buildings, like from when to when to get to this point?
So uh I I believe it was late twenty twenty-one, we actually did inspections of all the buildings. And those inspections happened over the course of about a a month. We have architects that are licensed architects and licensed engineers that go through the building and do their independent, so mechanical, electrical, plumbing, engineers, structural engineer um and the architects go through and do those. Uh then we itemize them and the itemization usually takes a couple I would say a month plus to put together. And then there's a series of obviously sessions where we just, we spend a lot of time with Joe. Joe knows this really well.
You're good buddies now, yes.
We also have interviews, by the way. We interview the principals. We interview the the facility staff. So all the custo, the head custodians each participate in the process and the principals participate in the process. So that we understand and we we hear what they see because we see a lot. But the boots on the ground.
Right, you hear what really are the bigger issues and what people are concerned about. And they're going to see things that you're not going to see and vice versa.
That's right. And then Joe also helps. And we do an initial prioritization. And then we sit down with with Joe and his team and look at that prioritization. And there's a little bit of shifting up and down depending on what the needs and goals are as well.
Okay, thank you.
So that was my question, um how you prioritize. Um I know if community members are looking at this. I know at the beginning you just said you're either getting a satisfactory or an unsatisfactory. And while we did get a satisfactory grade, there's many things that are, that fall under category A with priorities one and two. And I was just wondering at the end, and you know, I know there's a larger discussion coming up on Thursday, but at the end, if the priority twos might be, get pushed to priority one depending on, because Joe is on the ground with his crew day to day, every day. And if those things shift, but you already answered that.
Yeah, there are a a bunch of priority ones. And so the these are items that we really want you to address over the course of the next year to year and a half. So uh if you were to go ahead and suggest doing some series of projects, that we would immediately focus on those priority ones and make sure that those could be addressed right away. But they do not elevate to the level of taking a building from a satisfactory condition to an unsatisfactory.
Thank you, Eric. Thank, thank you so much. Alright, so that, that's the end of our presentations for this evening. We'll see you both on Thursday at five.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. That moves us on to our committee reports. Um I know I mentioned earlier that we had a communications committee meeting. I don't know if you have anything to add, Kaylee, because we were talking about Parent Square and Adam went through that very thoroughly, but is there anything else that you have? Any other committee reports?
Facilities.
Go ahead.
We didn't have a uh committee meeting, but I met with uh Joe a number of times and with Eric Keir a number of times. We had some engineers here. Andrew is involved and we're taking down the bridge between, I guess, the E building and the J building. It needs to uh be redone, so uh that'll be closed for the year. We'll see how we do redirecting student traffic, but we think we're okay that way. I know they're working right now on making sure, um I know Josh and Adam are working on making sure the uh fiber, the internet cables, everything's going to be done because they have some conduits through this. So have to rewrap those through the building in order to make everything work well.
Right.
But um we could have shored that bridge up, but it was probably better to take it down now and just be safe and.
Yeah, I know we have like that was a safety issue, like an immediate safety issue. So that's kind, is it, has it come down, starting to come down?
It's almost all down.
It's almost, it's down.
Hillary and I walked over later and before, before the meeting. Yeah.
It's very close to being completely down.
Okay.
It's like, it's like London Bridge.
Okay, it's very falling down. And we'll, I'm sure we'll address more of this too on Thursday in terms of where we are.
Andrew, do you have anything else to add or?
No, I think you said it perfectly. We need to take it down.
Okay, took it down. Um anything else? I know we addressed some policy things. Was there anything else that you you guys want to comment on?
I think policy was already covered.
Yeah.
Earlier, so. Yeah.
Great. Okay. Uh we have reached our public comment period. Um we always welcome public comment. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit any comments to three minutes. Board members can always be contacted via mail, email or phone. Um and after the public comment period has been completed, the board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented. Would anyone like to speak and make a public comment? All right, come on down and just state your name and. Hi. Make sure you're talking to the mic so we can all hear you.
Yeah, I'm just not really tall enough. Hi, I'm Susan. Um so I know that Barrett's been here a few times to talk about the Chappaqua Elementary Childcare Initiative. Um but I'm a parent that's a member of that group. Um and so we are a group that formed after a bunch of us tried to sign up for CCW. And I'm sure you remember that there were crazy lines and a bunch of people didn't get it. And so parents came together to just talk about what we could do to affect change. Um you know, we started by just trying to understand the need. And so you may have seen our survey went out. We sort of blasted the community with it. We did get full responses from a little over, or somewhere around to two hundred and fifty families. And what we found is that there's going to be in the twenty twenty-three school year, five times a greater need than CCW can accommodate for after-school programming. Um and so we just started asking questions of CCW, of the rec center, of neighboring towns like Pleasantville, Armont, Rye, um other nonprofits like CCW to figure out how people um provide after-school in towns that have a growing need as demographics are changing. Um and we are just sort of hoping that the board will want to be a part of this conversation and will want to look at some of the data more thoroughly of these surveys that we sent out and that we put together um and help us figure out what we can do as a parent to have young people who are in great need of of having continuing education after the regular school day. Um so I'm just here to to make a pitch that the Chappaqua Elementary Childcare Initiative is eager to share our data to let you know what parents are asking for and to figure out if there's ways that we can collaborate with you to find a solution to this growing need.
Thank you very much. Um does anyone want to discuss anything or is there any more public comment? If anyone else was out there, that's why I didn't see. Is there anyone else? I didn't think there was another. Alright, thank you for your comments.
I'm going to open this for discussion.
Yeah, uh yeah, I didn't think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm, public comment's over, but I I would like to share that I have been thinking about this. Um I know that there's a need. I also know that uh I've spoken, I've spoken to um the Children's Workshop and whether or not they plan on continuing to use our facilities and in the future, and that's in question. Um we wouldn't be making any adjustments for this coming school year, and we're certainly not going to provide childcare, but there could be opportunities for organizations who may want to run childcare out of our facilities that would have a greater capacity to support our community. For us to have conversations with potentially organizations in that way to help support our families moving forward. But that would be a a process for us that we would have to talk about collectively together. But I just want to be clear, it's not going to be a a Chappaqua Central School District-run program. And I think if you find in in research that you do in other school communities, that's the model that they typically follow. An outside organization comes in and uses our facilities and we help support it in that way. So um we are going to start talking about exploring those different opportunities moving forward for the following s- school year. But I also want to continue to um be working with Chappaqua Children's Workshop because they have been a partner for us for so long, but they also recognize that they're unable to support the needs currently, even even though I have granted them any kind of space that they need in order to support our family. So um I just want to share that uh publicly. So I'll take a look at any data anyone wants to send me, but I know that there there's a problem and a need out there that we need to be thinking about together. Okay. Does anyone else have a comment?
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, we are moving on to item three approvals and ratifications. Um I would like to take items three point one through three point four together, which are the minutes of the July sixth board meeting, the July twentieth special board meeting, the July twenty-ninth special board meeting, and the August third special board meeting. Um do I have a motion for three point one through three point four?
I'll move three point one through three point four.
Second?
A second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Uh can I have a motion for three point five, which is Regulation seven thousand, schedule fees for community use of district facilities? Uh this is the first reading for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Uh can I have a motion for three point five?
It's the reading.
The reading?
Yeah, it's just, it's a reading.
Uh yeah, just to do the, like, are we going to pop it up there at all or no?
Um we don't, um I, I don't think we need to. I can just.
Okay.
So can someone second the first?
Yeah, I don't even know if anybody moved.
I'll move it.
Okay, I'll second.
Alright, so the discussion point is as follows. So we met, every year, the Board of Education, this is only regulation the board acts on. And um because it's a, it's a fee structure and you're authorizing the district to charge um groups' specific fees to use our facilities. We haven't adjusted it since the pandemic started. We didn't make any um changes to anything that was happening, but now we're in a place where our costs are increasing. And there's a significant uh uh adjustment we need to make for using our lights. So um four years ago, uh we took on supporting our recreation program in a very different way by working with our teams directly rather than going through the uh
Rec department.
The rec department through uh an agreement with the town because we felt it was more efficient and that has worked very well for us. And the way that we decided made the most, most sense for us to facilitate that structure would be through a participation fee per person. So um you'll see that we have increased those fees by two percent but rounded out. So it was a whole number. So it'd be easier for the board of it, uh for the business office to manage. And then we have outside groups who, and and groups that are a part of our recreation program that use our facilities um for clinics and for other um events where we need to charge an hourly rate. So we've been increased those by two percent as well. So you'll see in our proposal, we have a two percent increase across all of our fees with a a strategy where we round it up. So we weren't dealing with cents, okay? Um that, it's certainly not going to cover the costs associated with running our extracurricular program for our for uh or or using, allowing outside groups to use our facilities, but we felt like we needed to start moving in the direction of increasing our fees based on our increased costs. Um the only thing that's very different uh is our our real costs associated with our lights. So when we initially drafted this policy, we had shared that we would only charge our community groups the real cost for the electricity to run the lights. Well, it went from like twelve dollars an hour to seventy dollars an hour. And it's not, we're not making any additional um we're not making a profit off of that. We're not even uh asking people to help us replace any of the um mechanics of the lights. If we have a problem, we're just, we're just um asking for them to pay the real costs that were billed by the uh the electric company. Because we can't be paying, we can't be offsetting that cost.
Right.
Um so if if we, if we can't increase that to that rate, then we just would have to prohibit uh groups from using the fields with the lights. Um and and we've already uh broached that conversation with our, with our our teams that frequently use those um our facilities tonight, and they completely understand that.
Mm-hmm.
So we thought that this was a a reasonable consideration that we felt that we would present to you tonight uh with uh to get your feedback. And then the policy committee can remeet and make adjustments based on feedback. But we would ask you to consider um uh adopting this, approving this in whatever form it's going to be at the, at the August thirty-first meeting, because our town teams begin their program, their seasons on September uh seventh, the day, the Tuesday after Labor Day. That's the seventh. It might be the sixth. It might be Wednesday.
So basically, everything's, it's not that much of a change.
I don't even see that changing the lights you're talking about.
Christine.
What?
Except for lights.
Yes.
Where, where are you pointing? No, I'm looking.
The first, the first box at the bottom.
Last one.
Okay, there we go, from twelve to seventy. Okay, now I see.
Yeah, this is a real small.
Whatever else is pretty similar.
Dollar or two dollars. I think it's pretty reasonable considering. Kelly, yes?
Yes, so I I did get some questions about, so I know here it states um these increases of two percent. Um which is very nominal considering what's been happening, that we haven't done anything in, since the pandemic. Is it, I know that some of the teams are I don't know if it's a contract or like they
I don't know if it's a contract or like they pay per player, not per hour. So can you just clarify?
Let me talk about that. So our rec programs, not ours, but the programs that use our fields, begin after Labor Day. Teams that are or programs that are trying to reserve our fields for the summer are not in season. So those are considered clinics or special events. So they're charged an hourly rate to use our facilities. So we only don't, we only do the per player charge when we're in season, when we're not in season right now. So in season, which is from when to when? From? Let me pull that up. So for example, the fall is it's after Labor Day and it goes into some point in November, but I have to pull it up cuz I don't wanna be incorrect.
Okay, cuz I think there was a question about school year versus fiscal year.
Oh, no, 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 these are, yeah, and I'm talking about, like, our teams right now, some of them are out there having, like, working out.
Right.
Right now, those are our varsity teams. There's no charge associated with that. It's the teams that are not CCSD teams who wanna use our fields right now. They need to pay the hourly rate to reserve them. Just give me one second. I can tell you exactly when the seasons are.
Okay, so while you're looking for that, the other question is, so in season throughout the, when you do the per player fee, is that also going up by 2%? Just like the per hour, summer clinic fees?
Right, so instead of a, like, for.
Because there's nothing here that says that. So I think there was some confusion as to what's going up or.
So if you look at the first box, that's the per student fee.
Community sport.
Right, so 15, $16, 750 to $18, the non-residence fee, that's the per participant charge.
Okay, I guess the the confusion was cuz it says per program, even though.
It's per student.
Yeah, usage was, okay.
Well, I I think what I think are, and I and I could be incorrect, but I think that our our recreation program understands the fee structure. I think the confusion is when are they in season versus when are they not? And they have to pay the hourly rate. That's what I think the confusion is.
Were they not charged that out of season fee previous years? And that's why?
No, that if they use our program during the summer, they're always charged an hourly rate.
Okay.
There's no, it's only when they're during the season are they paying the per student fee to to reserve our spaces in addition to the lights fee. Okay, hold on, got it right here. So the the team season for the fall is September 7th to November 20th. And then for the winter, it's December 5th to March 12th. And then for the spring, it's April 3rd to June 11th. So if you're reserving outside of that time and we can accommodate you, you're paying an hourly fee. Right, because it's not a rec team.
Okay.
It's not a rec team in season.
This isn't, this hasn't changed.
No, I think what's happening is that I I think what's happening is that we are very accommodating to our our rec programs and our fields are in solid condition. So when there are opportunities presented to use our facilities, our groups would like to take advantage of that. So I think this summer in particular, there are more groups who would like to use our facilities rather than other facilities that they've used in the past and on ours. So but they're, they've never asked before, so they're just.
They weren't aware of the structure, you mean, okay.
Which now they're incurring a new cost that they've been thinking about.
And it, and let me tell you, it makes complete sense. We can't be charged, like, we have to, people who are running summer programs outside of this structure really need to be charged the fee rate because we can't be operating in a way where we're we're considering teams in 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 season during the summer because we don't have anyone in season during the summer.
Right.
Even our varsity teams that are running clinics that have students participate in them from other school districts or youngsters, they're paying fees.
Okay.
They're not, so it's very consistent. So I would, I would, I would, I wouldn't like to change that right now cuz it would cause a problem for us. Andrew, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Just just that, you know, Christine noted our fields are pristine, right? And we do wanna keep them that way. And Mr. Ramondo is challenged quite often with maintaining those facilities, giving fields, grass fields time to rest, giving repair time to our turf fields. We've spent a lot of money getting those fields to where they need to be. And that's why they're in such high demand. We just need to balance that as well. So we're working carefully with our sports groups to make sure that we have some rotation available and give them access, but also make sure that they remain in the condition that they are today. And we don't shorten the useful life of those because we don't wanna be back asking taxpayers for a new turf field well ahead of its planned useful life.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so we will, if anyone has comments, then.
They should send it to Ryan, Hillary and I, and we can look at that before the next meeting. Okay, thank you. So shifting over, recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't. Yeah, we had a second, so we're just gonna move all in favor of the first reading and then move to the second.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so. No more questions, all in favor? And we'll do the second reading.
Okay.
So this is the first reading, right?
This was the first reading.
Yeah, this first. We we felt like we needed to present it publicly and give people the opportunity to comment before we.
I know, cuz sometimes we just do that, yeah, we'll figure that out later.
Okay.
Okay. We'll work all that stuff out later.
We're over, we're past 10.
We're all a little loopy at this point, okay.
4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.1.
I'll second that. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for item 4.2.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor? That brings us to item number five, our consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the board to make more effective uses of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss any matter individually or any piece of business can indicate that and the item will be considered and voted on separately. And it's recommended that the board approve the following consent agenda. But before we do that, we, one of the items on our consent agenda, which is item 5.3, which is the tax warrant, that is usually something that we move out because we take a roll call vote. So I I am gonna make a motion to move item 5.3 out of the consent agenda.
I'll second that cuz I had that written down.
Okay, there you go. So all in favor of moving 5.3 out of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye. Should've asked if any, is there any other item that anyone feels that they should move out of the consent agenda? No. Just to do a brief summary, so we have items 5.1, 5.2, and then we go items 5.4 through, let me double check, 5.27. Other items on the consent agenda, I know we've discussed some of them previously, but they include our CSE summaries, the COVID testing policies for extracurricular activities, transportation contracts, educational service contracts, pool fees for our swim team, approvals related to our science curriculum and phonics program as we're discussing during the superintendent's report, some final change orders and budget transfers that were later to work done to build some vernice spaces at Greeley. And I did also want to mention that we are accepting a gift in honor of our Greeley student who was a Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholar, a gift of $1,000. So that will be used for our team and research programs. All of that is under the consent agenda, just to give a brief summary. So can I have a motion to approve to approve the consent agenda from items 5.1 through 5.3 and then? But wait, I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I couldn't. But I know, I was just double checking 5.1 and 5.2 and then picking up again, thank you, from 5.4. My number counting, so it's to 5.27. Can I have a motion to approve those items as part of the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion on those items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Andrew, 524 and 526 are those for last year's budget or this?
Yes, they are. As we're reallocating our expenses for the 21, 22 fiscal year with our orders, we wanna make sure everything's coded in the right spots.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's what I thought.
Thanks, Warren. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're gonna go back to 5.3. Thank you for stopping me from saying it's 5.4. So I'm just gonna read item 5.3, which states, whereas the Board of Education does hereby approve the execution of the tax warrant to collect the tax levy for the 2022 to 2023 school year in the amount of 117,000, 117,187,287 dollars for school district purposes and $3,431,254 for Chapakua Public Library purposes. Can I have a motion? And then we'll take a roll call after you go. Can I have a motion to approve item 5.3? I'll move 5.3. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ryan? Okay. Yes.
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, motion carries. Terrific. Okay, moving on to item six. This is, I'd like a motion to acknowledge the following contracts that were approved by the superintendent pursuant to board policy 6085, purchasing bidding 6.1 is an agreement for services for consulting services and 6.2 is an agreement for with educational data services. Can I have a motion to acknowledge those contracts in item 6.1 and 6.2?
I'll move.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Onto facilities, we'd like to acknowledge the change order approved by the superintendent per board resolution. And that's item 7.1, a change order at Haras Greeley High School that was approved by the superintendent related to electrical work in the amount of $1,416.82. I will move to acknowledge item 7.1. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Financials, I'd like a motion for items 8.1, 8.2 and 8.3. And that is to acknowledge receipt of the claims auditor's report for June 2022, along with the fiscal year summary for 2021 to 22. Item 8.2 is acknowledging receipt of the treasurer's report for June of 2022. And item 8.3 is acknowledging receipt of the extra classroom activities report for June of 2022. So can I have a motion for 8.1 through 8.3? Ryan, can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Notice of future meetings. I know we've discussed that this Thursday, August 11th at 5:00 PM in the academic comments of Haras Greeley High School, we will have a work session on facilities. And following that, our next meeting is opening day, which is Wednesday, August 31st at 10:00 AM at the Haras Greeley High School Auditorium. And I have a motion to adjourn our meeting at?
I move adjourn 10:20.
10:20.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Good night and thank you, everyone.